Okay, and good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. We do appreciate your attendance and for the viewers, we do thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore and Commissioner Larry Hutkins, and on my right is Vice Chair and Commissioner Todd Wilchin and Commissioner Bill Avery. And I am Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board. So assisting us this morning, we have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lundgren and Dan Melting of the County Clerk's Office, and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. Will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and thank you for joining in. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancasterne.gov. Agenda item one or minutes, approval of minutes to the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September 20th, 2016.
It's been moved to second that we approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
I voted.
I'm sorry, Amundson.
Epstein.
Motion carries for yes, one abstention. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through September 27th, 2016.
Move approval of the claims?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve all claims processed through September 27th, that is today. Any discussion?
Yeah, I need to point out one claim that was discussed at the Thursday staff meeting was a claim for review. It was a claim that had not been submitted within 90 days from a small company called AE First Rate Pumping Service. Apparently, they had had a loss of their bookkeeper and did not get these claims filed within 90 days. The two commissioners that were there were fined for putting it on the regular claims, but I just thought the other commissioners who were not in attendance should be aware that this claim was forwarded for approval as a regular claim, waived the 90-day rule.
Well, I did read the minutes of the meeting, and it seemed like it was a reasonable thing to proceed with. So, okay, it's been moved in second that we approve all claims. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three are public hearings, Appeal of County Preliminary Platte Number 16003, Conestoga Lake Estate, Southwest 91st Street and West Pioneer Boulevard.
Okay, we'll open this public hearing, and first of all, we will hear from anyone who is in support of this, and then we will go to those who are opposing it.
I'll need to swear you in.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Hello, thank you for taking your time to hear what we've got today. I've got a small presentation I'm gonna send up to the screen.
Could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, my name is Mike Faustman, live at 2025 A Street. Okay, so what we did at the last meeting of the Planning Commission was approve the splitting of my lot, which clearly, there is no problem with it as far as all the laws regulating splitting of land. Today, I want to just show a couple of the things that my PowerPoint didn't show in support of why we want to do it. Here, as you see, is the plans for the house that I've submitted to the Building and Safety Department and to the Homeowners Association for Approval. Obviously, it's not a trailer house, and it's not gonna lessen the value of anybody's homes out there. It's a large home that'll fit the neighborhood. Here's the acreages. Mine is 8.73 acres. That's this big, main, open field in the view. As you can see, I've got almost double the amount of land everybody else does, and it's a big, open, buildable space. In 2004, when the original plats were done, the majority of the lot was in floodplain. The only buildable is that purple shape where it's basically an acre and a half. Everything else was in a floodplain at that time. The day my wife and I, Jenny, went to make a offer on the land, the floodplain had been revised, clearly not in the floodplain anymore as it's at the edge of the lake. Here is the national wetlands inventory showing the wetlands that are in the area. With the green and the blue and the legend, you can see the wetlands clearly are not shown on my property. However, I'm gonna skip this one, it's hard to see. However, I have had the Army Corps of Engineers out to visit my property. They did core samples, they delineated the wetlands on the property as to only this small pathway down the middle of the land. Basically, the bottom of the ditch is what he defined it as. Over in this area is where I proposed to build the house. It's clearly not in the wetlands. And again, the Army Corps of Engineers said this is the only place on my property that is qualified as wetlands. This is the drawing that I had provided to the Army Corps of Engineers for my progress or project. These orange thicker lines were going to be a check dam, in which I would basically create a way to slow the water, slow the transmissive sediment, and basically make it so I could control the water on my property. They had no problem with this, however, in the meeting, or in the, I'm looking for the date, I apologize, four days ago, they gave me permission to do what I'd like to. They said, "Everything is fine, but we don't want you to put in the rock check dams." And if I don't, there's no permit needed whatsoever. They have no problems with any excavation I want to do. So I said, "That will suffice, as long as I can dig, then I can use my soil as needed." This picture I'm showing you, there's multiple, and this is the acreage question, and this lot right here, if you can see, that's my nine-acre lot. Okay? Now, I want to point out, there is a lake right here, there's a lake over here, there's multiple places where water is stored in a lake-type of setting throughout the area, right proximate to my land. And lastly, this is my property pen. This right here is the five-strand barbed wire fence. Clearly, you can see the fence is on my property, and it's not even three feet tall, as you can see in that picture, it doesn't even come up to my waist, and it's clearly not been maintained. It's just a rickety old fence between the land. And that was one of the things that one of the opposition is stating, that they're afraid of the cows getting in. Well, it's not my liability, I understand how to be around cows and not, you know, tease or harm them in any way. We went over that in the last meeting. Again, I'm abiding by all the laws, and there should be no reason I can't subdivide my land. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead.
Larry? Do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I did. Now, you said, can you tell me again what you just said about liability for a fence or?
Oh, I just was showing the condition of the fence. At the last meeting, the neighbors to the west, they had stated that the fence will in no way stop a 2,000-pound steer from bowling through. And I said, "I understand that, and it's unfortunately not my cow. If it were my dogs, like I explained, I have the liability of maintaining my own dogs on my property." So I was just pointing out that the fence is there, it's not in a well-maintained condition, and it is on my property.
So you don't feel like you have any responsibility for the fence?
No, that's not what I'm implying. I'm just saying that the points of the fence being, you know, whether or not it's maintained or anything like that, I was just showing the condition of it, partly because some of my land is on the other side of the fence, and I think there's a law that says if it's maintained over, say, 10 years or something like that, they can assume the possession of the land. I'm sure you know which.
Well, you do have the laws of adverse possession, but also, if it's a line fence between two properties and they have livestock, you do have the responsibility for building and maintaining half of that fence.
Sure, I do.
And you realize that you all have to bring that fence up to your half of it, up to at least four strands and a post every 16 feet high enough to maintain cattle, so.
And it is a five-strand, but yeah, and yes.
Okay.
I do understand and agree with that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in support? Okay, let's move on then to the opposition.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. My name is Peter Reinkort, and I am the operator of the farm directly west, and I'm in opposition to two houses, or to splitting that lot, for the simple reason that we will have a house very close to the fence line, and I'll address the fence in a minute. The proximity of having a building, as well as children and dogs, that close, will not keep an animal safely away unless it's a very substantial fence. 11 years ago, Mr. Hutkins is the gentleman who was on the county commission at that time, we had this issue already addressed, and at that time, I asked what my options are in terms of getting a substantial fence. We've been on the third bull now, that bull that was there before is gone, but the issue remains, and I just wonder why now we are faced with the same decision again, and it does not seem to be an issue, according to the Planning Commission. The reality, at the time that we talked about this 11 years ago, I had asked for the possibility of creating a green buffer belt between our property and the houses that were going to be built. There were no houses built at this time. If you look at the way that the situation is today, all of the houses north of Mr. Faustman's property are built on the ridge, they do not encroach on the waterway. The waterway is, in effect, a natural buffer. And I will come to the issue of the fence. That is a sore spot with me, a really sore spot. And the reason is that 11 years ago, the decision was made by the county commissioners that a proper fence was to be built at the cost of the property owner. At that time, at the cost of the property owner who was developing it, we got stiffed. He never did anything to do that, and that's the reason that the fence is that way, because I'm waiting until somebody makes a decision that will take care of this issue. Because if I build a fence at my cost, trying to get the other property owner to partake in that cost, I think is a difficult situation. And so I am really, at this point, waiting until somebody makes a decision that will stick, because all of us, on both the west side, the north side, and the east side, were essentially stiffed by Mr. Green. Now, Mr. Green has died since that time, so there's no recourse there unless we approach the ARs, I suppose. I'm fully aware of the issue of safety, and if I recall correctly, at the time that I was making that same point, Mr. Hutkins said that a chain-link fence, as I suggested, was out of the question, as well as the property owner.
You have one minute.
Saying, "No, we can't do that." He was against, this is Mr. Green again, he was against that green buffer, simply because that would take away from land that he could sell. And so I'm still at the point where I see a really serious safety issue. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
I do have a question.
Commissioner Wilchin?
When you talk about a safety issue, I mean, are you talking about the safety of your animal, or are you talking about the safety of?
Safety of the other property owner's child, and, you know, simply, if you have a house 15 feet away from where cattle are normally roaming, you're asking for trouble. In my experience.
But, so you know that the person that's potentially gonna build this property is gonna have children?
Yes. He has a child, two very large dogs, which he lets run free, and I don't think that's Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reinkort. Next.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Chad Stevens. I live at 9045 West Burnham in Denton, Nebraska, and I also serve as the president of the Homeowners Association for the development. What I'd like to do today is just cover some administrative issues that I did not get to cover in my appeal, because I unfortunately didn't have the time to research due to the change in the timeline, having to submit appeal. But one thing that bothered me in the discussion last time was that the planning board and the decision 11 years ago really wasn't authorized. And so I did some research, and just on, as this board probably knows, is that 1979 zoning resolution basically created the Lancaster County zoning rules. And the main thing, that sentence in there, is to really talk about, you know, the safety and ensure that there's proper utilization of the areas, rural areas of Lancaster County. And also, that is backed up by the first article of the zones under the purpose. It restates all the importance of this body to address safety concerns of the area and keeping the character of the developments outside in the rural Lancaster County. An interesting point, Dave, in Article III, is basically, the point I want to bring out there in the highlighted area is every lot has to be on what is considered a buildable lot.
Excuse me, Kelly, can you enlarge that? I can't read that. All right, thanks.
I think it was just me.
Yes, the only thing I bring out is, the point I want to talk about is buildable lots and stuff like that. And of course, in the zoning law, or zoning codes, is the definition of a zoning lot, okay, or buildable lot, and there's the definition of it. Then, moving on to Article V, which covers agricultural residential areas, which are the concept of this, it talks about there's a requirement for a front yard. And there's, and basically, the, you know, 80 feet is kind of what we're talking about. Here's a map that I sent in, this is from the Army Corps of Engineers, and bottom line, I know Mr. Faustman just presented that it was only the ditch area was wetlands. But from this map, what this is, is the latest Army Corps of Engineers map, that shows that whole area, which ironically is very similar to the former floodplain, that is what is represented on the map as a wetland area. Also, it's our duty to protect that area in accordance with the Clean Water Act, which here, from the Federal Register, in that highlighted area up here, is that basically any area where water flows into the waters of the United States, which Conestoga Lake to the southwest built by the Army Corps of Engineers. Anything that drains into there is waters of the US, and we have a responsibility to protect it.
You have one minute.
My concern is, going back to this, this is what Mr. Faustman presented to the Homeowners Association, and if you look at this darkened line here, which is an elevation of 1260, and that is approximately what was on the earlier map of what is wetland areas. And you can see that this area right here, you would not be able to put a home and a septic system, whether it's a lagoon or a buried tank, and not approach upon that area that drains into the wetlands. Why that's very concerning to us in the neighborhood is here's a conceptual map of the current project at the Conestoga Lake, and the area going right down in here, there is no sediment control, no filtration, no check dams. It would go directly into, any water flowing out of that area in Mr. Faustman's lot would go directly into Conestoga Lake. So if there's a sewer, a lagoon system, or any type of sewer system that's approaching upon that wetlands, there, it is my opinion that it could create a health and safety issue where that could go into the waters of the US, into the Conestoga.
Okay, I think that you have made your point.
Okay.
Are there some questions? Larry?
As president of the Homeowners Association over there, is your association, and what is a split, or are they unanimously in favor of, which I'm sure they aren't, or opposed to this additional lot being created? And I recall this well, 11 years ago, it was very close at that time, and yes, this was a bigger lot, but that's what it took to get a deal, and with the understanding that there would be no more lots built there. And this lot was purposely made bigger because it did include that drainage way, which was considered in the floodplain.
Yeah, the majority of the homeowners oppose this. I only had three lot owners, one's a construction, you know, building right now for another family, and two other lot owners extinct. The rest of the lot owners opposed this split due to the things that myself and Peter put into this. And then you mentioned, on the lot split, though, in your Article 14 of the community plan, it specifically says, "When you amend a community plan," which is, our area qualifies that, "you will not create more dwellings."
That's right.
So this was a clear, what the Planning Commission approved is a violation of the provisions in Article 14 for a community plan. And also, back 11 years ago, this lot, because it was a floodplain, and it was already determined that there wasn't two buildable sites in these eight-plus acres, the change that this board made were to the lots to the north, which is currently, the approved lot is two lots to the north of this lot. The original was three lots, and that was, right, it consolidated, and that pulled one house to the north of this proposed lot, there was a potential building, buildable site directly north to where Mr. Faustman wants to build a second home. And so, this, because of the floodplain. And then, just on the floodplain issue, also in your articles, you need to update your articles, because you go under the old FEMA rules of 1%. So if we went by your rules as published, it's still a floodplain. Now, FEMA changed theirs to a half or less percent of a chance of it being flooded during an annual, but your articles still say 1%, and under the old 1% rules, that potentially is still a floodplain, according to your rules, not FEMA.
Let's go back also to the fence issue. I remember clearly that it isn't in the law that they have to build a chain-link fence, but they do have to build a legal fence. And has your Homeowners Association discussed with the owners, and has there been a willingness to maintain and put up a good, solid fence between the two?
Well, um.
And it can, you know, even with a large animal like that, if lots of times, they'll put four wires that are sharp barb, and then put an electric wire in the center, and that usually detours even some of the largest belt, but that is a cost that needs to be shared by both.
Well, unfortunately, the developer of this area never informed us, any of us, even though it was directed that they even had to inform us of this, none of the, when they, nobody purchased their lot, and none of their purchase agreements were told of this requirement. Not until we started research, I did the research, and I've informed them myself, I own the largest, other large stretch, because I'm directly opposite on the east side of the development, and I've talked to George and Marcia Stewart, and yes, I'm gonna work with them, whatever work, and fortunate for us, George and Marcia and his brother Kenny to the north have already done improvements to their fence, just because of their concerns and good neighbors. But we all are willing to do that, and then the people to the west are in agreement, and even Peter has shown them proposed improvements, and we want to work with them, because we want to be safe, we want to be safe too. We really like Peter's idea of a green space, more just because, not only a safety, but a beauty and character of our neighborhood. We'd like to keep the houses up on the ridge line and keep that green space, because it is why many of us purchase land out there in the rural Lancaster County.
Todd?
Going back to Larry's initial question, so are you here speaking as the president of the Homeowners Association, on their behalf authorized?
Yes.
Or are you here as an individual?
I'm here as the president of the association, and a majority of the members oppose this split.
So they've taken action?
Yeah, that's, in my appeal, we had signatures from a majority of the landowners that went to the Planning Commission, those same landowners still oppose this action.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? I'm sorry, you have already spoken. I'm sorry, you have already spoken. Okay? Oh, okay, I see. Okay, anyone else?
Do you solemnly swear from the testimony you're about to give is a truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Tom Chaka, planning staff. I'm here to address several things that were said and clarify quite a few of them. First off, as far as the zoning code is addressed, it's not really an issue for this. This before you is not a zoning issue, it is a subdivision issue. We're not doing a change of zone. The zoning was already changed ten years ago from AG to AGR. Also, this area is not in a community unit plan. It was done as a preliminary plat. The issue about one buildable lot is correct. You can have one main building on a buildable lot. That in the zoning code is just saying, if you have a buildable lot, you can only have one main building. It does not prohibit you from taking a lot and subdividing it into two lots, as long as you meet the area requirements of that zoning district. This being AGR zoning, the minimum lot size is three acres. The applicant's lot is eight acres. So he could subdivide that into two lots and meet the AGR requirements. Typically, when somebody wants to subdivide their lot, even if it was in a preliminary plat that set a number of lots, we wouldn't, typically, they would not come back before the planning commission to amend a preliminary plat. They would be allowed just to go straight to and do a final plat to subdivide the land. The main reason, or really the only reason, this was brought back was because of the one condition that was put on ten years ago that said to reduce the number of lots from fifteen to fourteen. That was done. Does this comes up? There we go. That requirement specifically said, this was the initial application that was submitted with the preliminary plat ten years ago. That condition specifically said redraw the lot lines between four, five, and six for two lots. The applicant's lot is down here. That lot was a little over eight acres, mainly because at the time, the majority of it was in a floodplain, and this was the only buildable area. The final plat that was approved ten years ago, as you can see, shows the two lots on the north side and still has the eight acre lot on the south. Subsequently, since then, FEMA has redone their floodplain maps, and the floodplain no longer is on that eight acre lot, which then allows a second, per the subdivision ordinance, would allow that lot to be subdivided and then a second house built on it. Actually, subdivision ordinance would allow the lot to be subdivided regardless of the floodplain. Subdivision looks at just lot lines. Where are lot lines? All the issues that have been brought up concerning fences, floodplains, grading, drainage are not a subdivision ordinance issue. Those things would be addressed with a building permit. And I did receive an email from, from the Army Corps of Engineers that stipulated where the floodplains are on that property, which is what Mr. Fosman had showed earlier. Also, issue of safety was brought up, but anytime, even the lot to the north, it didn't restrict where the house could be built. The setback in AGR is fifteen feet from a side yard setback. So you can build a house within fifteen feet of that lot line. I'll mention the fence, even though it really isn't, doesn't pertain to subdivision ordinance. But the fence issue was brought up ten years ago. There was a motion made to have that as a condition. Subsequently, on the final action, when the resolution was voted on, that condition was stricken from the resolution. There is no requirement that a fence be built. We looked that up after planning commission.
I were insistent on that.
The only other thing I would mention. Here it is. Chapter Three, Section 3.08 of the subdivision ordinance states, "If upon hearing, the commission shall find such proposed plat to satisfy the requirements of this resolution, it shall approve said plat." Basically meaning, if the applicant or the preliminary plat meets all the conditions of the subdivision ordinance, the planning commission or the board shall, shall approve the plat.
Who owns the access roads within the subdivision? Are they still owned by the homeowners' association, or have they been taken over by the county?
I know that.
They're taken over by the county.
Answers that question.
Ken Schroeder's here too. But yeah, I mean, typically, I think the rule is after six lots.
And the Corps of Engineers, we've heard conflicting testimony this morning that all of the area is out of the floodplain. We've also heard that maybe the ditch is still in the floodplain, which is correct.
It's not quite. According to my maps and my, what I've talked to them, all of it's out of the floodplain. But the ditch, this is on the applicant's property. This blue line in the center, which is kind of the drainage channel, has wetlands in it. So.
So it's not in the floodplain, but it is in the wetlands?
Yes.
Part of it. Approximately, we can't tell from here, approximately how wide of an area it is that traverses?
I, you know.
It's about six feet wide. The total width is about twelve feet wide total.
Thank you.
Deb?
Tom, there was a term used to retain the green buffer. Do you know what that was in reference to? Okay.
No, there was, there was, it may have been talked about at one time, but there was no requirement for a green buffer.
Larry?
Can you shed any light on why that special requirement that a legal fence be constructed on the property lines was omitted? Because I know Commissioner Hare and I were very insistent upon that at that time.
I think it was, I think at the end, they considered it a, maybe like an overreach. It was a condition that they really, the board felt that they really didn't have the authority to put on.
David Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, County Attorney's Office. I listened to the hearing from two thousand and five. Commissioner Shore had made the motion to add the fence requirement.
He did.
It was removed at the second hearing, because the way it was worded was basically going to make the county the perpetual arbiter of this fence, because it wasn't requiring any special kind of fence. It was basically requiring a suitable fence, and so there was going to be ongoing negotiations and arguments over the fence as time went on. And the commissioners probably wisely decided not to be involved in the matter between the private parties in an ongoing situation.
So there was a vote by the board to remove that requirement?
Yes.
And that vote was?
I don't remember what the vote was.
But there is a record that the board actually removed that.
It is not.
Was it done administratively?
It is not embodied in the final resolution.
I know it's not. I just found out this morning it's not in the final resolution. I just want to know why and how it was removed.
It was removed by a vote of the commissioners.
Probably on recommendation of the county attorney for the reasons you just outlined, correct?
Actually, one of the commissioners, and I forget which commissioner it was, raised the issue, and also some other state statutes regarding fence siding. And said that basically the board would be overstepping its bounds and would be embroiling itself in a continual conflict over this.
Well, I guess we had identified that it was going to be a potential problem in the future.
Here we are.
We tried to say, and I don't see anything wrong with defining a legal fence, because that's in Nebraska law. In fact, it was just updated by the legislature and actually strengthened in nineteen eighty, in nineteen ninety-nine. Okay. What a shame.
So let me just make one thing clear. Okay, I need to understand this. This is actually, this is a preliminary plat type thing?
Yes.
Okay. And so I just wrote it down, that the county board, if it meets all of the requirements, if the requested change meets all the requirements per the subdivision ordinance, that the board shall? Is that how I, what I heard you say?
Yes. Yes.
If I could just clarify, Mike, you did say that you will build the required fence?
I was told by the association president that all the association will be a part of the fence cost. No certain terms or anything like that, but I do understand that being property line owner, Mr. Higginson said about fence, both sides are equally.
Responsible.
Okay.
It's called good neighbor law. Yeah, it's that good neighbors law I'm talking about.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. All right. Well, any other people to talk? All right, I will close the public hearing then, and let's go down to correlating item five A.
This is due business, a resolution regarding appeal of preliminary plat number one six
Okay. Based upon the information that we heard, I will move we deny the appeal of preliminary plat sixteen zero zero three.
For the same reasons, I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we deny the resolution regard, that we deny the appeal. Any discussion? Please call the rule. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Larry?
This is a mixed thing, apparently. The county attorney tells us, and I assume that your recommendation would be the same as it was ten years ago, that this is something that the county board should not get involved in as a fence issue.
Yes, sir.
That sheds quite a light on it. I do, I had planned to vote against this because I do feel that this is not what the local people want. Their homeowners' association is against this decision. Anytime you build a home in an area that was, at least in a floodplain, up until a recent determination, you're skirting with the possibility of having flooding damage when you get a large rain. Rain can only disseminate at a certain rate. The one thing that I will go ahead and go probably with the majority here and vote for this is the fact that I think maybe we can finally settle this fence issue, because the applicant has said they will do their part on building their half of the fence. And I'd encourage both, both groups to work on this and build a good fence, because you know there's a past history and it's dragged on for ten or eleven years already, and it needs to be settled.
Okay, any further discussion?
Would you restate the motion?
Basically, it is to deny the appeal of the preliminary plat?
Which is the plaintiffs would be the homeowners' association at this point.
Right.
So vote for the denial of the appeal is the intent to allow Mr. Housman to subdivide?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Because it is the appeal of the subdivision. Okay, is that clarified? Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, please call the rule.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Our next public hearing is setting the final tax request at a different amount than the prior year tax request for Lancaster County and the rural library for Lancaster County. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is a truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Officer. Last public hearing for the budget process this year. So what happens is, we've adopted the budget. There is one additional step that is out there that says, if your property tax request changes from last year to this year, there's an additional resolution that has to be done, which is then forwarded to the county clerk's office for the setting of the property tax levies. So within the next couple of weeks, the county board will take action on all levies that are forwarded to the county clerk. This is our step from our side of saying, okay, we've adopted the budget, this is what the property tax request is, and it is different from last year's. So in all reality, we've already, we've already done that because we've adopted the budget. This is just kind of the cleanup. This resolution is forwarded on, and come October eleventh, when you finalize levies, this is what the clerk's office will work with. So just to remind you is the tax, and this really gets into tax dollars. So the general fund tax request increased by eight hundred and forty thousand nine hundred dollars. Our building fund increased by three hundred and six thousand dollars. Our levy actually is decreasing because of the valuation increase. So tax dollar-wise, our taxes will increase by one point eight one percent. So that is what this resolution is really stating, dollar-wise, what it's moving to.
Any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to, in support of, or in a neutral position? We'll close the public hearing in this regard. And so we need to move to correlating item five E.
This is a resolution on matter of setting the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen property tax request for Lancaster County at a different amount than that of the prior year.
I'd move approval.
Second.
It's moving second, that we approve this resolution. Is there any discussion? Please call the rule.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is unfinished business, agreement with Roca Berry Farm, authorized on Roca Berry Farm to apply magnesium chloride to those portions of South Thirty-Eighth Street. And Roy Streets has designated an exhibit A of the agreement. The term of this agreement is two years from the date. The agreement is executed by both parties.
Roca Berry Farm failed to get the agreement back to me in a timely fashion. The ball's clearly in their court. I've spoken with them on numerous occasions. I think they're trying to get the city of Roca to contribute to the cost, but the delay is entirely from their end. I recommend just removing it from the agenda, and I'll put it back on when they get the agreement back to us. It's unfortunate, but the ball is in their court.
Okay, so upon the recommendation of, Carrie, we will move it forward then to next week, right?
No, I would take it off the agenda.
Oh, okay. I'll take it off the agenda. Okay.
New business, five C, is offer received by the Lancaster County Sheriff at the sale conducted on September eighth, two thousand and sixteen, for real property no longer serving a county purpose generally located at twenty-two oh one South Seventeenth Street, Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. So as the board is aware, when we were working on finalizing the sale, it was discovered that there were several, there was a utility easement that the city had that runs basically underneath the building. We're in the process of getting those utility easements removed. By accepting the offer, Brian is concerned that they would have to forward the asking price that they bid upfront and then wait for us to... price that they bid upfront and then wait for us to remove the utility easements. Our main concern at this point is getting those utility easements removed and making sure that Brian's offer is firm. Ken Seacrest is here today, and we've had discussions regarding making Brian's offer irrevocable for a nine-month period while we remove those utility easements. From my perspective, that would satisfy all our requirements without making the hospital have to put their money, say, in escrow or pay it upfront while we're working through this.
Yes, Larry?
Would they be willing to pay earlier than nine months if we can get the easements removed? That's fair enough.
So, basically, we would ask the board to delay accepting the offer next week. During the weekend and I will work up an agreement to make that offer irrevocable and then bring that before the board the following week.
We talked about this at our staff meeting last Thursday. What is the status of those utilities at this point? Because I know we were talking about Time Warner and Black Hills.
We know the city Public Works has no problem removing their sewage easement, and they've already put that into work, same with LES. The problem again is the other utilities that are located out of state. I have requested a distribution list, which I have not received yet. I checked on it again yesterday to find contacts for those companies so that I can personally contact them and ask them to expedite the process because it can take months because they simply have no incentive to do it. Interesting that cable television didn't exist at the time the easement was created, so it's, and there's nothing to the south. I mean, it's a virtual impossibility that there are any facilities located in that. Plus, there's a nice big old basement that would cut across any linear used to. We know there are no valid utilities. We just need to get it released, and if I can get the contact list, I'll at least try.
Okay, Larry?
In our research, we're pretty certain that no existing utility easements are in use.
It's a spatio-temporal impossibility since it's been abandoned to the south of us and there's nothing to the north of us, and cable TV didn't exist when we built our building in the sixties. There could be a gas line in there, but it's, no, no, there are no utilities.
What is the recommendation of the county attorney's office in this matter?
Oh, we would ask the board to delay accepting the offer, allow counsel for Brian and our office to draft an agreement making their offer irrevocable for a term of nine months, accept that offer at the next board meeting.
And would there be language in there such as if we can clear up this utility easement, then the transfer could take place?
Absolutely. There's no need to let the fuse run the whole, the whole duration. We just want to make sure that we have enough time because we know that it will be difficult to contact some of these out-of-state utilities.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
I would move that we follow the county attorney's recommendation in regard to the sale of twenty-two hundred Saint Mary's.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we delay this and that we ask for the attorneys to create a resolution. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Kerry has a minute.
I would point out one point. Don Clean is aware of this. I think Brian Hospital's also concerned that we maintain the property in good condition, which Don is intending to do. We'll maintain the insurance, we'll maintain the condition of the building during this interim period.
Okay, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Welchen?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a special designated license application from Myers Wine, Inc., doing business as Myers Cork and Bottle for reception on October fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, at Roca Berry Farm, sixteen five thirty-one South Thirty-Eighth Street, Roca, Nebraska.
I would move approval of the STL.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the STL for Myers Wine, Inc., for October the fifteenth. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Higginson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Welchen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five E is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and the clerk of the district court to award an annual supply contract for commodity quote five one eight six, Detab Products Company, LLC. Total amount is three thousand seventy dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this recommendation for the, to approve the annual supply contract for commodity quote. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Welchen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an interlocal agreement with Village of Denton for law enforcement services within the village limits. The Lancaster County Sheriff will assign one deputy to duty in the village limits and provide a cruiser. The village reimbursed the county at the overtime rate of pay for the deputy assigned. Term of the agreement is September first, two thousand sixteen, through August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Good morning, Terry Wadron, county sheriff. This is a continuation of a contract we've had with the Village of Denton for a number of years. Basically, they sort of work out an agreement with the deputy to provide dedicated services when they, when it works out best for them and for any events they might have, they reimburse the county then for those, for the deputy's wages and vehicle costs.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the interlocal agreement with the Village of Denton. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Welchen?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is acceptance of a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, Award Number twenty sixteen dash DC dash BX dash sixty, in amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of enhancing the Lancaster County Family Drug Court program. The grant period is October first, two thousand sixteen, to September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services.
Roger Heidemann, Lancaster County Juvenile Court Judge.
And just real short in summary, an overview of the grant. It's a federal grant through the Department of Justice. It runs three years. We're awarded four hundred thousand. We are one of six sites that receive this funding, so we're really excited with this opportunity. The bulk of the funding goes to provide services for drug court participants. This includes treatment, supportive housing, moral recognition therapy, and then also pro-social activities incentives, that type of thing. It also provides an indirect cost to the county for administrating that grant. So, the county will receive a total of about thirty-five thousand over the course of the three years for the administration of the grant. This is Judge Heidemann's court, so I will let him talk more about it.
We're really excited and pleased to have received notification of this award, and I probably regret doing this on the record at some point in time, giving a big shout out to Sarah Hoyle. We were, we were aware of this award but had no way to really access it or write it, and out of nowhere, I got an email from Sarah that said, were you aware of this? I said, well, yeah, we're aware of it, but we don't have anybody that will write it for us. And she said, well, I can do that. Well, that I can do that is no small task when it comes to writing these federal grants. And ironically, we were at a conference in California and we're talking to another individual from Children and Family Futures out there who said, well, if you applied for it and you get questions about it, that's usually a good sign that you're going to get it. And I said, well, knowing who wrote ours, we probably won't get any questions even if, and that turned out to be the case, that it was so well-written that she didn't even get any questions about the grant. So, big thank you to Sarah.
Okay.
If I may point out, she does all this without a grant writer in her department on staff.
It's her.
It's her.
Yeah. Got Larry.
Hard to do.
Well, Judge Heidemann, thank you for recognizing that Sarah is an exceptional person and goes the extra mile for anything that benefits Lancaster County. But we also want to thank you for being willing to adapt new ideas and new techniques. Probably no such thing as a bad kid, but they just need to be motivated and inspired, and we just constantly have to search for ways to get them on the right path so that someday they become taxpayers instead of tax consumers. But you and, and your fellow judges in juvenile lead the way. I think you're, you're the leaders in Nebraska on looking for better ways to do business, and ultimate goal is to make these young people productive citizens, and so thank you for your leadership.
Well, thank you for those comments.
And Deb?
Yeah, I think it's really exciting, and maybe you can't provide this, but how many families are you serving now, and how many more do you think you'll be able to serve with this additional funding? I know that's kind of a hard thing to quantify.
How many we'll be able to serve is always kind of a guess on how many of those cases will, will come in. Right now, we're, we're serving about thirty-five to forty, and when we originally started this new track that we're utilizing now, the department assigned two dedicated caseworkers and a supervisor, and now that team's up to six dedicated workers and the supervisor. So, it's, it shows the commitment from the Department of Health and Human Services as well to, with these families that have had children removed for substance use issues that from the beginning, it's a rehabilitative effort to get the children reunited and back in the family home if possible and safe to do so, and this is just another resource we're going to have available to hopefully increase those numbers of reunifications and successful closures.
Thank you. Okay.
Right, thank you.
Well, I do want to just say one thing too, Judge Heidemann, as well as Sarah, and for everyone associated with that. You know, Lincoln is out, Lancaster County has always been on the cutting edge of this. You know, if you start going, if you start going to the national conferences, you do find out, you know, that we really are doing an excellent job in contrast to many of the other counties. So, thank you so very, very much. And so, okay.
We'll move approval of the grant acceptance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept this grant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes.
Welchen?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Five H is standardized system of annual reporting certification and addendum for roads, streets, and highway programs for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. The standardized system for annual reporting and certification is a large report that we have to file with Nebraska Department of Roads for our federal funding. I come to you every year for it. It's extraordinarily detailed. It tracks hours used per machine, oil, tires, whatever we put in that machine. So, it does take us a lot of time, and I'm bringing it to you today so that you can sign the approval.
I would move that we authorize the chair to sign the report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we, that the chair be authorized to sign standardized system of annual reporting. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Higginson?
Yes.
Welchen?
Abstain.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention.
And it's hundreds of pages of exciting charts and reports, so.
Absolutely appropriate for an engineer.
Mm-hmm.
I is an agreement with Blue Valley Behavioral Health Crisis Response Counselors for after-hour screening and assessment on, on as-needed basis at the youth services center. The county will pay one hundred dollars per hour for the services. Cost of county is not to exceed six thousand two hundred dollars. Term of the agreement is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this agreement with Blue Valley Behavioral Health Response, Health Crisis Response Counselors. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Welchen?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is an agreement with the Child Guidance Center for internal case management services at the Youth Services Center. The county will pay up to seventy-one thousand, ten dollars and thirty-five cents for the services. Term of the agreement is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the agreement with the Child Guidance Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Welchen?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a lease between the city and Lincoln and Lancaster County for space at the Municipal Services Center in nine oh one West Bond Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, to provide office space for adult probation. Term of the lease is from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Cost of the county is seventy thousand dollars per year.
Dave Durbin, deputy county attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. At the last second, the city attorney and I were reviewing this lease, and we discovered that there was an error in section two E. The last sentence should be removed regarding annual payments. The payments are actually on a month-to-month basis. I would ask that the board approve this lease subject to those corrections.
I would move we approve the lease subject to the corrections outlined by the county attorney's office.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this lease between the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County, subject to the corrections as noted. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Higginson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Welchen?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is a statement of acceptance of possession and future responsibility by Lancaster County for equipment, supplies, and furnitures purchased by the Nebraska Supreme Court for the District Three A Probation County Reporting Center North. Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the statement of acceptance of possession and future responsibility. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Welchen?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is an amendment to county contract C dash sixteen dash nine with EnviroTech Services, Inc., using the state of Nebraska contract one four three one eight OC to provide anti-icer, de-icer solution. The amendment extends the initial contract term from January fifth, two thousand sixteen, through August twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost during this extension is not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this amendment to county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Welchen?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six are consent items received and placed on the file of the county treasurer final report of two thousand thirteen distress warrants issued in two thousand fourteen. Utility number fourteen eighty allowing Windstream to install temporary cable to accommodate Lancaster County Road Project fifteen dash thirty-one oh five adjacent to Roca B. Road from South Eighty-four Street to South Ninety-eight Street. There is no cost to county. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and the following. Marvis Reler Trustee, Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street and West State Coach Road in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents, and the University of Nebraska Foundation, Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street and West State Coach Road in the amount of two thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty cents.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Avery? Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number seven is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda may do so at this time.
I don't believe there is anyone here, so let's move on.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, at ten a.m. or immediately following Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting in the Billuxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, September twenty-nine, two thousand sixteen, due to the lack of a quorum. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, October fourth, two thousand sixteen, at nine a.m. in room one twelve of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh-two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE dot gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live and is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on five C. TV, cable channel five. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the internet at lancaster NE dot gov, or five C. TV, video on demand, or five C. TV video on YouTube.
Move be adjourned.
Second. It's moved in second that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?